I was just more or less worried about the special permits. All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First, I would like to make note that the meeting is being recorded. And that will be required to have a roll call vote because I see that the we have a member that's accessing remotely as well as I see there's a select board member that is accessing remotely. I would like to announce that and welcome the select board here tonight. We'll get to you in a minute. We got a couple couple things to clean up first. First of all, I
Hey Bill, can I just interject real quick? Do you need to announce me by name as being remote? So Eric Hodge attending remotely.
Okay.
It's one of them play it by the book.
You can, Bill, should I call our meeting to order as well? Okay, so we will call the September sixteenth select board meeting to order. As Bill said, this meeting is being recorded and we have one member attending remotely. Jason Cooter is attending remotely.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Okay, I move to approve the minutes of the the acceptance of the August twelfth meeting.
Chairman, you got a correction to make?
Certainly.
The CMR PC delegate? Mr. Hunter? Change that to Mr. Ambrosino?
Ah, yes.
And I had one other question.
Well, was this was was this CMR PC delegate? The alternate member or?
This was just the
Yeah, so it would be should have been me. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want it.
No, he don't. Nobody wants it.
Well, maybe.
Seth?
One other question. Is that required she ever won't be? Or was he here in person? Because they have a market.
Eric, you were here at the last meeting remotely, correct?
Not remotely, I was in person.
Oh. Yeah, we need to correct that, too.
Other than that, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as an end.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On roll calls, any?
Yes.
David, aye.
Eric Hodge, aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Jake Kraus, aye.
Okay, that that takes care of the minutes. All right, we're gonna move on to the joint meeting between the planning board and the select board. We got in the House of Production Plan. I believe there's a presentation that's also gonna be available.
Emily, Emily Lovitz is here.
Yes. Yeah, you can see right up front.
Do you want me to put it on the screen? Yeah. Great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for accommodating this as a joint meeting. This makes my life a lot easier. Because otherwise I'd have to make two different presentations. So my name's Emily Lovitz. I'm a principal planner at the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. I've been working with the town of Mendon in the past over a year or so on developing this housing production plan, which you should have a draft copy of and hopefully you've gotten a chance to review it. So just presenting, I'll make a quick five minute presentation tonight. And then just looking to seek any feedback on this draft. If you have any comments or questions. The ultimate goal is to have both boards vote to adopt the plan. And then I'm able to send it to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly DHCD. The State Department that approves this plan. Yeah, so basically this is an update to the 2019 plan, which is expiring either soon or already expired. I forget exactly the date that it expired. It's a five year strategic plan. So they really need to be updated every five years. So this update includes relevant updated population demographics and housing stock data constraints and challenges to housing. And recommended goals and strategies that the town is encouraged to pursue in order to meet its housing needs. So like I said, this process kicked off in, I believe it was July 2023. We've had a wonderful working group of staff and committee members meeting approximately monthly with myself to help me with this process. I've really provided like the technical aspects, whereas the town, the working group has provided just really helpful insightful information into what the real challenges of the town are and helping kind of really move this forward and do public outreach, all the other things that need to get done for this. So when this process started, we had just finished the master plan. So we decided not to do a like a formal survey that we usually do, just because we felt like the town was kind of over surveyed. So we took the but there was a lot of helpful information from the master plan survey on housing and land use infrastructure. So we took any kind of information from that and that has also informed the development of the plan. But we did hold a number of, oh, well, a couple of community forums which featured like a presentation from myself, just to inform the community about kind of what the issues are, what the potential kind of strategies are to address housing needs. And then we had an activity just focused on where people would like to see housing in the future develop, where they wouldn't. What types of housing people think are needed. And following those kind of presentations, we also had like a follow up survey that was available online, just in case anyone wasn't able to attend in person. They had another opportunity, which is basically a kind of a visual preference survey. It's a quick survey. So we did our best to do have a number of public outreach methods available. So yeah, just quick background on that kind of the process. And after that, we worked on developing the goals and strategies and and putting together this this nice plan. Just a little background on kind of why this is important and why towns are encouraged to do housing production plans. Under chapter forty B, the Mass General Laws, cities and towns have to reserve ten percent of their housing stock as affordable. Deed restricted affordable for households earning eighty percent or less of the area median income. So currently, and this is based, the percentage is based off the most recent census. So as of 2020, Mendon has 2,215 year round units of of housing, but only forty of those units are reserved as affordable. So that equals only 1.8% of the town's housing stock that is listed on the the state's, what's called the subsidized housing inventory. It's just the state's kind of list of all like affordable units under their kind of what they qualify as affordable. So in order to comply with this law, and Mendon's not alone with not complying with this. There's a lot of, I work with a lot of towns in Central Mass that are actively working towards getting to the 10%, but are not there yet. So it would need 221 total units of affordable housing. So it's 181 units short of meeting that goal. So really, this this town was, this plan was was created to kind of put together recommendations of of ways to kind of gradually get to that that 10% mark. So kind of the reason why towns want to achieve that 10% if you're under it, it leaves the community kind of vulnerable to developers that see comprehensive permits under chapter forty B. Allows them to override zoning requirements and build more densely if they're including affordable units in their proposed developments. So sometimes this is done as a kind of a more friendly process. Under the law, sometimes it's a little more less friendly. But with a housing production plan in place for the next five years, it can actually be used as a tool to manage forty B developments, as long as the the town can demonstrate that it's adding affordable units to its housing stock. So under the law, if the town adds half percent of its total housing stock as affordable units, it can declare what's called safe harbor for a year. So it can deny these comprehensive permits. Or if it was to produce one percent of the total housing stock as affordable units, it would be able to claim safe harbor for a period of two years. So that that can be motivation for a lot of tasks to complete one of these. So in just translation, half percent, that would mean like 11 units total, or one percent would mean 22 units. So if the town was to add 11 units, you know, this year it could, from then on, once they're permitted for a total of a year, it could deny comprehensive permits. So, you know, just one other benefit to to doing this process, giving the town a little bit more control over these laws. So yeah, so the final element kind of of the plan is the goals and strategies, which are described kind of in detail in the narrative, but also summarized in a like a table at the end. So I really hope that table is structured in a way that's that's useful for people kind of referring to this. It kind of gives a quick overview of the goals and then assigns, yeah, the timeline. So it's a five year plan. So it's got, you know, 2025 through 2029. Or ongoing, if it's something the town would be recommended to do every year. And also assigns kind of a responsible party. So who would be tasked with, you know, addressing each each action item? So I won't go through everything, but just kind of overall, in summary, the goals and strategies address having adequate capacity to plan for housing, as well as leveraging financial resources, making appropriate zoning and policy changes that allow Mendon to to really create the housing that is desired here and kind of remove any regulatory barriers. It recommends facilitating housing that meets the changing demographics in the 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 plan. It it shows that the town is, like many other central Massachusetts towns, is aging. There's a greater population of seniors who have their own kind of specific housing needs. Maybe a single family house with a large yard maybe is not the most appropriate for people in that demographic. So, yeah, just just keeping in mind that that the housing here should meet the needs of the changing demographics. Along with, you know, reducing harm to the environment, being more sustainable methods of production. Yeah, and then just encouraging ways to partner with developers and encouraging housing production, but in a way that maintains the the small town character that people, you know, really take pride in and and should. It's a beautiful town. I think that is all that I have for my quick presentation. So I just welcome like any questions or anything, any comments? Or if Elena, if you have anything, because you were a part of the process, or Michael. I think, I mean, I think this is, this is helpful. I know you gave an earlier in depth presentation to both of our boards in the process of making the housing production plan. So that I know that that was a lot of the information that went into this plan is in that presentation, which was recorded in the spring. I'm not sure. I can't remember. Yeah. So that that had a lot of, a lot of the information, which I think is a useful thing if people want to refer to that in the future. I think, you know, hopefully, I know Dylan, you were projecting the the action plan. So like, I don't know if we want to like sort of put each of those up like again, or like, I don't know, like, I mean, I think I don't have any additional comments, but this was I think this was sort of the sum, I guess, the summary version of the very the 116 page document. So that's including the appendix. So a lot, a lot of data is in this document.
Can I say something, Bill?
Sure.
I was just gonna add, just so everyone knows who was helping Emily along this process. Elena and Mike Goddard were representing the the Board of Selectmen. And Mazhar was on it. Myself and Dylan were staffing. We did try to get Tony Gemma on, but he, we kept running into conflicts with his schedule. And I can say, I I think Mike Goddard would support me on this is that it was a very lively discussions we had about housing and how complex it is and how difficult it is. I mean, I I just saw that graphic just to keep up with the minimum is 11 units in a year. And the planning board, as you know, Bill, just approved the Route sixteen project that had forty four units or forty units and only four were afford are going to be affordable. And so that shows you how difficult it is. And I I think this is a great document and this will certainly get approved by the state. Oh, I should add also just Vera Choudry, who is online, is the our regional housing coordinator. And she was very helpful as well.
Bill, just to add on to that, a couple things. I think the timing. The timing couldn't be better, given the fact that I think between our two boards, we've got zoning by law review committee, we've got the master plan general by law committee, things of that nature. This is going to be a great feeder dock to those committees, because there's there is all types of zoning opportunities. Because the big, you know, we talked about forty B, that that is a big component, but I look at this more about housing stock. For the different types of housing stock, Mendon needs, given the feedback we've gotten, affordable is one flavor. But a lot of that requires zoning changes. So I think the timing on this, if if it's approved tonight, it's actually advantageous, given that these other communities are kicking off now.
Yeah, and that's something we've already spoken to CMR PC about within the zoning by law review committee is you know, we're gonna be addressing the zoning regarding, you know, affordable housing. It's always, in in the past, I'll say it was always like a dirty word in Mendon, affordable housing. So we always had our challenges whenever we tried to adjust the zoning regulations. I think now it's more palatable. I honestly believe in the next couple of years, the state's gonna force us to do it anyways. The regulations at the state level are changing so fast right now that multi unit housing and affordable housing are to be pushed out to the urban suburban communities and we're going to we're gonna be have to address that as it comes. But I think
Our congressman Jake Oshinclaw has been to Mendon three times in the last eighteen months. And every time he's come here, he's spoke about it, encouraged us and said that the federal government give us earmarks and do anything they could do to help us be successful. Seem to have that here. So I think the timing is really great.
Yeah, I I think, you know, we we took a big step last year with the R MUD. You know, and I think, you know, we look at additional zoning of that nature. I think that was, I think I categorized at the time as walk before we run. And I think that was a good step in the right direction, but I think Mendon has a long way to go. But I I I agree with this document. I think it's a good place to start. Am I confident that Mendon will ever reach 10%? No. It just, I'm not confident in that. We don't have the makeup of the community for that. But if we can get to 5%, I think that's a hero's welcome for the town of Mendon.
Say 10% is aspirational, Bill.
Yeah, 10% is aspirational. But other than that, I have nothing more to add.
A quick question. Emily, you mentioned that that the community outreach and that we tried to do the best we could. Maybe you could just talk about what the outreach consisted of, what the turnout was and what some of the feedback was from the residents?
Yeah, there is one section in here where there's a number of comments, I think, from public outreach. But so yeah, so we held a a public forum that was open to the the general public in January, didn't get great attendance at that one. So decided to focus on the senior center. So we just kind of built off a session that they had. I think we had, it was it was a good amount. It was between 20 and 30 people at least. Yeah. So there was a lot of great discussions in there. I think I find a lot of like hesitancy when I when I'm showing up, I'm talking about housing, but when you actually kind of break down and have these like really interactive activities, people really open up and are expressive about like their challenges, particularly affordability. There's not really any options if they wanted to downsize from their current home, or they have kids that would like to move home and be be present. And there's just nowhere for their, you know, kids who have graduate degrees and are even earning like very decent incomes to find a place here, especially with like lower rental stock, maybe not as many condominiums. I have one chart in here just showing, you know, the recent sales prices just for condominiums. And that's just, it's comparable to a single family home. You know, whereas usually condos would be a more kind of introductory, first time home buyer, or even a downsizing option. So I think that's where I was hearing a lot of just desire to like kind of have a more diverse housing stock, but also not, you know, huge apartments. We definitely heard that that was confirmed, but we we want to keep the the small town character here. There's a map in there, too, of the the proposed kind of areas where new housing could be focused as well. And I think those were received pretty well as 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 well. It wasn't a lot of, you know, cut down this area of the forest or anything. It was places that make sense for new development, places that are closer kind of to the more like downtown kind of areas. Yeah, any, well, really transit, but yeah, just areas that would would make sense. Trying to think, yeah, just you also did the a a short online version for for people who couldn't attend the workshops in person. Just yeah, another aspect of the outreach. Can you mention what you did there? Yeah, so I think that is also included in the plan in the appendix at the end. You can see the format for it, but basically it took each of the areas of that map that I just mentioned. So I think it was like seven or so proposed areas. It listed a a number of different housing types. So for example, accessory dwelling units, mixed use housing, cottage housing community, where it's like smaller homes, single family homes, but they're clustered together. Larger scale apartments, smaller scale apartments. I think we had like eight different options or so. Oh, it's on the board there. Um, and so we said for each of these areas, what would you feel comfortable seeing developed here if if possible in the future? It's all kind of a visioning exercise. None of these were necessarily like on on the books proposed or anything, but we want to see what people would feel comfortable with. That would help if the if there was a a strong leaning one way or another, if an area should be rezoned to accommodate that kind of type. So I I don't know if I included the results in there, but I can add them in. If they're not already in there, I think I just included the actual survey. But yeah, it was a quick kind of visualizing visual preference survey.
I I guess one of the concerns I have is is if we don't start making headway in this arena. And this doesn't just go for Mendon, this goes for a lot of towns. The state's gonna take care of it for us. They're gonna force these, you know, you're already seeing it in in neighboring towns that are adjacent, even Upton, who's adjacent to public transportation in Grafton. Are being forced to consider these apartment complexes. I know they've got one application in already. The last one they they bought out, they've been told not to do it again. But I I just have a feeling that you're gonna start seeing what we see happening over in Bellingham and Franklin in in towns like Mendon and Upton if we're not careful. So I think strides definitely need to be taken to to, you know, make it fathomable within the community zoning wise. And we're working on that now, so.
Affordable housing as no town water, no town sewer will help us, I think, eliminate some of those big apartment houses. You know, retail on the bottom, like you see them everywhere else into other towns. So I think that's one good thing we don't have to worry about. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but either way.
Until until someone pays to put it in.
Well, I don't.
Yeah.
For the water and sewer.
Water and sewer. Yeah. I saw that too, Barry. We do a certain areas that's certainly available for it. It, we need to be cautious. So what's our next step? Oh. Eric?
Uh, yeah, just a a quick question. I was curious, as you talked through kind of some of the feedback we received and some of the the sites you examined, how well do the expectations align with the type of density that that you're referring to? So I guess what my question is, is as we examine different sites, does the the type of density that was preferred via feedback support the types of growth rates that we needed in order to get us to our goal?
Um, so the goal is essentially 11 units per year. I would say that is the town's goal. I think that can be achieved through the proposed housing types that people were comfortable with. If it's a cottage housing community, I I just went on a a tour of one a few weeks ago and it it's it still has the same kind of small town feel and people have their own own individual houses, but it's at a a greater density than a typical kind of subdivision. So I think that's something that definitely could be achieved in town. Small scale apartments as well, where it's kind of no more than like four, six units. I could see that being built as well, or small scale kind of mixed use. I don't recall necessarily what the areas were zoned as, each of each of the areas. So I'd have to double check that. But I I would say
And I
double goal.
Yeah, I love. I I was gonna just mention that Eric, it's a great question. I, you know, the numbers that we're showing you that we need to get every year or or every two years or five years are probably not achievable in this town. Due to the lack of infrastructure. Affordable housing is very, very expensive to do. And unless the private sector comes in, but if the private sector comes in, you're only gonna get 10 or 15% of their development to be affordable. So and and for example, 52 Providence, since I've been here, we've gone out to bid twice to try to find a suitable developer to do 44 units now. And this is town land. And we've not received any bids yet. Now, we are still working on a third round. Hopefully this spring we can do it again. But it's expensive. So I think it's gonna be a long journey. And as Bill said, I think we might be crawling, Bill, instead of walking first.
I think that's a good point. I mean, the other thing to consider is when you're dealing with percentages, you know, depending on what other development happens in town, that could throw off your targets completely. So I think this, when I say aspirational, this is more about directional. Are we doing right things to diversify our stock? Are we demonstrating a positive movement towards providing some level of affordable housing with a production plan? Does that in the state side give gives us some safe harbor?
Yeah, and I think what we need to look at as a community is, you know, when we go in in the conventional development being an application from us, we've, I think we gotta do a better job of trying to convince those developers to maybe, you know, we'd have to provide some density leniency and and whatnot, but maybe negotiate with them to provide some affordable housing within those, whether it be, you know, a section that's townhouses or whatever. You know, we could look at some opportunities in that way. I think I think we're gonna have to think outside the box to make these.
In community preservation, you think about that. I mean, do we help defray costs on a private development? In community preservation, you think about that. I mean, do we help defray costs on a private development by getting them to create more units than they're planning on?
Excellent point, yeah. You know, and and believe me, what a town does doesn't go unnoticed by the state. They know that we've been trying to get development, uh affordable development at fifty-two Providence. And now we're looking at another Providence address, and we received a grant from the state to help us look at that. So they know. They know we are trying, and that goes a long way.
Um just to add on, um yeah, I agree with Jack in this, especially also with the housing production plan and trying to see our approaches and our methodologies to try to go towards that affordable housing um safe harbor unit is, I think, a step up as well, for sure. And trying to achieve those goals there is something that I think is worth also seeing. And I think the state recognizes that.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions, remarks? Anybody in the audience? No? Okay, so what's our next step?
Um the next step, I would ask that each board um just vote to adopt the the housing production plan. And then um if they both do, then I have a letter for um the chair of the select board to sign.
And make a motion to vote to adopt the. Vendetta Housing Production Plan.
Of two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor, roll call, please.
Damon, I.
Bill in Brazil, I.
Eric Hodge, I.
So I would be looking for a motion from someone on the select board. Okay, uh so do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so that was Mike Marali and then Mike Goddard. Uh so again, we, uh any further discussion? So we also need to do a roll call vote. Brugos, I.
Chanel, I.
Goddard, I.
Uter, I.
Okay, thank you. It passes.
Okay. Let's stand agenda right on the rest, so. But thank you guys for.
Is this whole housing production plan available online? For the public to see?
It is. It will be.
It will be.
It will be.
Dylan, we can make that happen, right?
Yeah, could you uh not only post it to the central site, but post it to the planning board site?
Yeah, so and then I would I would uh take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, uh roll call vote. Brugos, I.
Chanel, I.
Goddard, I.
Uter, I.
Thank you. So the select board meeting is adjourned at six thirty-four.
You're all free to go. Thanks for the.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, uh next thing on the agenda we're gonna call is the Site Review Thirty-five Cape. Good for you. Yeah, we're gonna do Thirty-five Cape first.
Thirty-five Cape?
Thirty-five Cape first, sorry, guys. A particular note, um board member Damon Tenio stepping down uh as he's the applicant on this.
Good, thank you.
Oh, yes. Um and we need to invoke the rule of necessity for Eric.
Jack, you're muted.
Yeah.
He already has, Bill. He's good.
All right. All right, just a particular note though that uh um we have invoked the rule of necessity for Eric Hodges, as in a butter. All right. Well, I will uh kick rule. I need to take over here.
Okay. Uh good evening. My name's Peter Lavoy. Uh I work with D and L Design Group and I am the project engineer. We're out of Milford, Mass. Um here tonight representing Hartford East Court. The project is located at Thirty-five Cape Road. Uh it is roughly uh four point one eight acres in size. Cape Road runs along uh the east side of the parcel, or east side of the plan. Topography slopes from Cape Road to the existing solar field, which is located all the way to the west of our property line. Uh there is an existing soccer complex uh to the north. And then there is residential homes uh to the south. Um this project was in front of you roughly in two thousand and twenty-one. It was approved uh back then. Um the building was was larger than what we're proposing. And we also relocated uh the parking along the along the soccer field side of the property. And now the only only disturbance along the south side, where it runs parallel to the residential, is an emergency access road. Uh we do provide a fifty-foot buffer strip along the building to our property line. And then there's another fifty-foot um buffer strip that runs along the parcel that goes back towards the the soccer field. So you basically have a hundred-foot no disturb buffer along the south of the property line. Uh and then it goes down towards the solar field. The new building will be twenty-six thousand uh six hundred and fifty square feet. Uh same use as before. It's just that we um made the building narrower to increase the the buffer zone along the south. We have fifty-three parking spaces. Uh all parking will be along the soccer field, and there's a small little parking area at the the west side of the building. There'll be no parking along the south. That's like I said, that's just used for emergency access. Proposed building will be serviced by a septic system, which is located uh at the west of the property. Uh we have a water connection off of Cape Road. Uh we are proposing that for fire suppression and domestic, but we also propose a location uh for domestic well up towards Cape Road. Proposed drainage will consist of catch basins, drain manholes, design that will collect uh the runoff from the pavement and direct it into three open basins on the west portion of the property. Roof runoff will go directly into an infiltration system, but the pavement will go into uh of a larger forbey before it goes into the infiltration basin. Along the common drive for the solar field, there are some catch basins uh that will discharge into an open water quality swale down to a small forbey and then into uh infiltration basin. Uh we will not increase any rate off our site towards the solar field. That was my interest point. That's basically, yeah, we did propose landscaping uh around the building, around the common drive. Yeah, that's kinda.
All right, I see you submitted a lighting plan. I I presume it's all downlighting?
Yes. Right, you also have that hundred-foot buffer along the back, so that also helps out a lot.
Is it just on the building or is there?
It's just on the building.
Okay. All right. So Jeff, is there anything that uh stands out on this project that we need to be aware of?
No, there isn't, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh. I'm with Graves Engineering, with the civil engineering peer review consultant for the planning board. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um we um had in fact got underway with our first review and issued a letter back middle of August, August thirteenth. Um there were no glaring deficiencies, but there were a few um things required by the zoning bylaw, if you will, and and in a slight adjustment of the building location that needed to be addressed. Um those were addressed and in a letter, a follow-up letter on September twelfth, I've recognized or acknowledged that any any comments we had in our first letter that needed um document revisions had in fact been addressed. Um so we're satisfied with the engineering aspects of compliance with the zoning bylaw, compliance with Mass DEP stormwater standards and stormwater guidelines, and um and compliance with amended general bylaws, uh chapter six, twenty-six, uh stormwater management. It's is presented um by Mr. La- Lavoy. Um it's it's this generally a a catch basin to manhole configuration for stormwater management. There are two infiltration basins at the west of writ- lower end of the site, nearer the um nearer the solar project that do in fact are provide infiltration in this adequate pretreatment before the stormwater does reach reach those infiltration basins. I had visited the site for the for the previous set of plans that that was um different applicant, different engineer. Um and and I remember back then there was discussion about the uh location. I think they originally came forward with two access points to the street, but because of the um site distances and traffic configuration at the intersection, the my intersection, the um that's why the plans then and now have the single access point. And I had no issues, um not speaking for the fire department, but I had no issues with circulation around the building, including um the width for um circulation of larger fire apparatus. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I have no issues with the plans from an engineering perspective. And the comments that we first raised had in fact been addressed recently, and those were addressed. It was a plan sheet last revised September twelfth. So those were the, those are the plans that the board will want to keep an eye out for, for having the correct version of the of the plans as they as they were revised during the design process. Um you probably do have a number of plans, a full set in front of you, last revised August twenty-second. That was the last full-size set I received. But in my latest back and forth with D and L Design Group.
Jeff, do you have your your last?
Review, review letter?
Provided the August thirteenth.
Certainly. As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, I have a few hard copies. One hard copy I was gonna leave with your office.
It says for another project. I was just, I looked at it online and there were a couple of things I just wanted to make sure. Cause I hadn't seen your latest that you sent out today, so.
I'd be glad to answer any questions. On the engineering related side.
At this time, you have no plans for vehicles entering the building? You don't have any plans for vehicles entering the building?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have a rundown of the build.
Yes, got this one in. Eric?
Uh yeah, I have a question for Jeff. Um Jeff, you'd mentioned during your review that uh the positioning of the building had changed. Could you uh describe that change?
It was moved a little bit to the north. They were, I didn't want to split hairs, but there was a required offset, I believe it was two hundred foot from their nearest residences, and it was just under two hundred foot offset. And the building was slid away from the residences to the north, if you will, to reach that two hundred feet.
Thank you.
Welcome.
That's the front of the building facing the street?
Yes. Yes, that's the front of the building.
The the narrow part is the front.
That's facing the street?
Yeah, there'll be stone, veneer.
Okay. Looks like everything's in order. You want this back?
No, that's that's for the planning board's files. Thank you.
I got a question, just a question. Uh you mentioned the downlighting. Um any other considerations in the the design of the building for the design guidelines in the town? Were there other elements that are built into the structure according to the design guidelines?
Yeah, with the with the minute design guides, design guidelines in here too.
I would think the architect took those into account. I'm I wasn't part of that part. I'm not part of the building portion.
As in the downlighting itself?
No, we were talking about the overall appearance of the building.
Sorry, I think the folks can't hear. Would you mind stepping up to use the mic?
Thank you.
Sorry, Jane.
And I was just thinking to keep um so that people's properties won't be devalued. It might be nice if, for instance, this building looked more like the highway barn. It would be more in keeping with um the residences across the street and also the um the one house that's in the historic district, not to mention the ones that are on Bates Street.
It's got about, it looks like six-foot-high veneer. Be more like to.
Have you seen the highway barn? I mean, it's got, well, all right. That's what I'm saying. It should, it would be nice if it would look more like that. Can't force them to, obviously, but um out of respect for the people who live in the area, it really would be nice if um it looked a little less nethery.
Yeah, well, I mean, other than wrapping in some vinyl in the front.
Yeah, that's right. Such a hard, if it was the front of the building was able to to face the road, where we could do like some
lines or some overhang.
Windows or something, you know, up on the roof, but it's such a hard play there for that, could it skip a little bit of the side? We tried to follow the way the building was kind of proposed that we, that the town had approved.
Yeah.
Down the street for Brazza, you know, with the stone veneer.
Yeah.
Kind of want to follow suit with that. And then the car wash, a hundred feet down the street, we kind of want to.
I think we're, yeah, I think what helped the Brazza building a little bit is canopy comes this way.
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely try to do something with that. That's why I was trying to do the stone, maybe even do that whole end in stone or something like that, or maybe some different style siding, you know, instead of uh
Right.
You know, I definitely would entertain. I don't want it to be looking like a steel building.
Right.
We're gonna own it, and I want to have, it's gonna be beautifully landscaped and well-handed.
Right, but I think, you know, I was just looking at the design guidelines. And um if it weren't, if there weren't residents across the street and close on Bates Street, et cetera.
Is this a historical area?
No, there is one house that is.
But not where this?
No, no, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, no, it's one house, but it's just, you are in a butter though to that, that one house.
We'll do our best.
Can I ask a question too? Um I see on this landscaping plan you have some trees along the emergency access. So when we look at this back.
You're not gonna see that, you're not gonna really see. Yeah, you're not really gonna see that building. It's not gonna be as open. It's not gonna be an open feel like that. There's only gonna be a like a thirty-foot strip along the back, because the other color, see how you have the dark green, that's the grass? So that's the limit of disturbance, and then you have forty-seven feet to the property line and then another fifty feet, so.
And now that's natural vegetation.
Yes, that's natural. We're not, we're not touching.
Yeah, you're not touching.
So there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a hundred-foot strip that's gonna be what the existing vegetation looks like now. Right, that's all you're really gonna see, because it's only just a very narrow strip just to get emergency access around the build, in the back of the building. That was it.
That beautiful flat black grass, we wish it was gonna be like.
Right, yeah, we wish that, because it drops off too on the right of that image, and then it goes down to the soccer field. It's the property line's right there. It's it's probably a hundred feet to that way to the soccer field.
So the side view, soccer field.
Right.
That's it.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you. And I hope, as I said, respectful of the people who live there.
Thanks, Jane.
I have a couple of additional questions relevant to things that have already been discussed.
Go ahead, Eric.
Thanks. I guess with respect to the lighting plan, Jack and I had discussed the the potential with the back of the building only have egress, emergency egress for man doors. Is there really a necessity for having the lights at a sixteen-foot height, or could we bring those down to be like a twelve-foot height?
Yeah, we could bring those down. Yeah.
Yeah, he says they can do that.
Great. Uh, that's one thing off my list. Another item was with respect to the the landscaping plan. We just touched on that. The 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 line of Arbor Vitae seems to arbitrarily stop about halfway up the site. Could we extend that another halfway up? Like basically extend that same line halfway up the the rest of the the building to provide further coverages, further coverage to the south?
Yes, we could do that.
Excellent. I've got two other questions. I can keep rolling or I can let somebody else talk.
Uh, go ahead, Eric.
Okay. The applicant had mentioned that the access road to the south side of the building is denoted for emergency access only. I'm curious if that'll be signed onsite and whether that would be enforced.
Well, the applicant said yes, he'll he'll put signage. That will indicate that.
Great. Um. Where's my last one? Oh, last question with respect to signage. I haven't heard anything about signage for the building. Is there any signage planned?
Uh, there is one sign right at the entrance on the south side, next to that first big tree. If you look at the it doesn't show it on the rendering, though. It's right where that tree is, right there on the rendering. It's behind, it should be behind it because we were twenty feet off.
So it'll be mounted on the building?
No, it's not on the building. It's us freestanding.
Dylan, I believe I I believe I saw the sign on the previous slide that was up on, it was a plan view sheet. Might have been landscaping. Yeah, there it is.
There's a little rectangle where that tree is. That's the, it's not labeled on that.
Oh, okay.
That's just a presentation plan, but that is the sign.
Okay.
And it's
And you're gonna present that sign for approval? We need a rendering. Board needs a rendering. Needs to be approved before you put it up.
Okay.
And sorry, but my last question, and then I'll let somebody else go. Just going back to the lighting again. With respect to lights, is the intent for these to be on a timer as well?
I would say yes.
Great. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Kathy, we'll take you first.
Me?
No, hold on, Carl.
No.
Can I get a name and address? I know.
Name and address, Kathy.
Question for for those online.
You're saying dates?
I would say, I would say you're gonna be daytime hours, no for so, you know, they're gonna be like, let's say plumber or electrician, seven to three. Where they come in, wrap their stuff, go to work, come back, knock their truck, go home. No late night. We don't know, we don't have applicants lined up yet, so we don't know exactly what's gonna be. But what what the catering to that, that type of problem? Yeah, I would say that the normal business hours during of for anything like construction-wise in the town.
Yeah, it's usually seven to seven.
Seven, seven.
Seven, seven during the week, seven to five on the weekends, on Saturday, actually.
Running to a plumber and he's got a water heater that's gone at midnight, he's gonna have to get into a shop to get the water heater.
Yeah, but I mean, if he's not going, he's not going in there with drums and
But it's, it's not a, it's not a regularly, it's not a regularly, regularly used, a normal standard hour. Uh, Carl, go ahead. Thank you, Kathy.
Carl, did you have a question?
Yes, Carl Hummel, fifteen Misco Road. I wanted to pass along some questions that I've heard about traffic. Twenty-three Cape Road is going to be a very large warehouse, and there was a traffic study done on on the intersections. What impact will this proposed project have on traffic? Is it going to be as major or just is this going to be more local traffic?
Yeah, this is gonna be from a planning perspective, this is gonna be a small impact on it, probably local traffic, your local probably electricians, plumbers, stuff like that, Edison work. You know, coming in and out. I would say probably have very little impact on a state road.
I agree with Bill.
I mean, we're 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 not talking about something the size of of twenty-three Cape that's gonna turn three hundred cars a day. This you know, this is in no way, and even that one didn't represent a great effect to the to the intersection at the end result. So this would have probably little or no impact here. Next question?
On that plan, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Those shrubs and trees are what?
Those those Elijah shrubs. Yeah. Right, right. No, there's only like two, two trees in the front, right on that side.
Oh, I see, yeah. Right.
Bill?
Yeah, Jack.
I I made a list of possible conditions that the applicant has agreed to. That I know that Damon talked about taking a crack at changing the facade that faces Cape Road. Perhaps he can share those with the planning board prior to installing it. That he agreed to extend the planting along the western end.
Southern end, Jack.
Southern, southern. That he's agreed to put in emergency access signage. And that any sign that comes to you, any sign they propose has to get planning board approval, which is standard. And then he has agreed on the southern side to lower the lighting to twelve feet.
And I believe he also agreed to timers as well.
And timers.
Yeah.
Basically, the light's there for safety.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll we'll word that properly.
Okay.
Thanks, Jack.
Okay. Um, any of the board members have any further questions? All right, anyone in the community?
Fourteen Edward Road.
Yes.
What is the maximum amount of tenants that could be in the building?
Actually, that's probably a building.
The sixteen units.
Sixteen units?
Sixteen units, yes.
More than likely, they're gonna be trying to be rented as double units, so there would be actually probably eight tenants, if everything goes correctly.
That's why I asked them to rent it somewhere. Okay, and one follow-up question. The amount of land that he purchased is four point one acres and the building is twenty-six hundred square feet?
Twenty-six thousand. That's fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? No. Well, without any further questions.
I have one more.
Oh.
Sorry, fourteen Edward Road. So four point one acres, just to follow up on that last question. Um, is there any plan? Like the entire site, how much does that take up, that four point one acres? Is there any plan to sell the remaining acres?
No, actually, they need it. They need it for the entire.
So that whole plan that I'm looking at right here in green?
Yeah.
Is four point one acres?
Yeah, they need, they need the additional land for the septic and drainage. And so they they won't be able to sell any more of that.
Thank you.
The what? What about it?
They don't, they're not gonna be allowed to park there once, once construction's done. We're gonna have gates. Yeah.
Oh, they park there now?
They park there because they can watch when the air conditioner on and the heat on.
Oh, I got you. I'm sure you'll find some parking there. But anyway, all right. Anybody else? Oh?
Make a motion to approve the site plan for thirty-five Cape Road with the conditions that were stated.
All those in favor, roll call please. Phil Lambresina, aye?
Jay, aye.
Eric Hodge, aye.
All right, so we'll put that one to rest.
Thank you, everybody.
We will draft up the decision and get it for Bill's signature.
Sounds good. Can Barry or somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing? Oh, you did. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye. Roll call please.
Eric Hodge, aye.
Jay, aye.
All right. Okay.
Otherwise you're getting the spin cycle.
We're now on to now onto One North Ave. I don't feel like I'm sitting on Wall Street or something like this. A team of attorneys come out. All right, thirty-five Cape Road. Now, Jeff, I've got the August thirteenth for that one, too.
Yeah, we have a new and improved letter.
I got it right here. I got it right here, sorry. All right, so. No, they don't have planes up here.
It's up here.
Yeah. Did you buy in Lizzo? Not like that.
You guys don't have a small copy?
Here we go. Here it is. All right, that's good, right there. Okay. All right. So we're gonna continue the public hearing for One North Avenue. All right, I guess we'll, at this point, I mean, you guys have spoken on the plan to death. I'll I'll look for your input when I need it, but I'm gonna defer to Jeff right now.
Sounds good.
And take a look at any outstanding issues we still have.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name's Jeff Walsh. I'm with Graves Engineering, the Men and Planning Board's peer review consultant, civil engineering peer review consultant. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, as of my previous letter that was dated September tenth, twenty twenty-four, I was satisfied with the revisions to the plans that talked about nothing major in nothing concerned us in a major way. There was a number of small items to be taken care of. There was one last revision that was made after we issued the September tenth letter. And that was to just make it more clear to the contractors of the impervious liner that's gonna be used around one of the two subsurface stormwater systems. It's the system that's deeper in the ground and and does would intercept groundwater if if there were not an impervious liner in there. So that the the plans were clarified. There was a little conflicting information and and I'm sick of dealing with contractors that try to spin things the way they want. So we just wanted to make sure the language on the plan was clear. So this before that, again, there was, there was no major glaring engineering items. And I was, I was, I am satisfied with the civil engineering peer review and the revisions made by Ola, the design engineer.
Okay, now I presume that striped area in the corner, that's where we decide to put the loading and unloading?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Uh, and where do we stand? Jack, you might know more about this. Where do we stand with traffic studies?
Yep, they gave it a clean bill of health at the last meeting. There was a lot of discussion and maybe the applicant can talk about this a little bit about the entranceway off of Milford and the whole proposed construction on Route sixteen. So they've offered a temporary entrance and a permanent entrance once Route sixteen's finished. I think I'd like the applicant to explain that to the board. And one other thing that I talked to the board, and I'd like them to, the two other things I talked to the applicant about was their proposed lighting and and car lights. I know there was a resident that was concerned about both of those.
Yeah, I think it was a matter of access in the drive-through after hours and
Right.
And there was concern of people pulling out that secondary access onto North Avenue. The lights flashing the area homes. Can you drop that just a hit? The other way. All right.
When they pull it onto North Ave, you got a five or six-foot wall. I mean, that that Charles River Bank is so much higher. So if anybody's pulling out of the North Ave, their headlights are shining right into the wall, not really anywhere, any house.
I think it was going up the access, the chases were concerned.
Oh, up there, I get it.
Yeah, so lighting. I didn't know if there's any type of
Yeah, I can speak to that. Yeah, the concern was was whether or not cars were going around the the drive-through, would there be headlights shining and bothering some budding properties?
Is there any type of screening?
Yeah, actually, we don't need to here because the site is actually recessed from the intersection. We're probably five feet lower than than the budding area. So everything's shining right onto the site. When I work on similar sites, if we're, you know, at a level ground, we might have to put a fence or shrubbery or something like that. But in this case, the natural topography, that corner
Does it plan out any type of landscaping along that side?
There's gonna be a retaining wall there, maybe?
It's gonna be a slope. It's just gonna be a
So the cars are gonna, cars will not even
Correct. You're not gonna be
That big tree is where per se
Correct. That that building is gonna be lower. Exactly. After the intersection's higher, the building's gonna be set.
Talking about on the north side of the one section.
Say it again?
Be any type of landscape, escape.
Yeah, so you can see on on there, that actually shows some of the contour lines. So we've got trees around the outside. You can actually see those those lines, those contour lines. That actually shows, they're one-foot contours up there. That actually shows how much
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the vehicles in the training radius of the drive-through. I'm talking about anybody pulling out that that other driveway.
Yeah, so so that driveway, that's aligned with a driveway right across the street from the bank. So that's facing right at the opposite driveways.
What he's talking about, though, is when they come up from Route sixteen, and they shine the lights of the houses that are north. So is there any way to put some
Oh, I saw you saying at the bend in the road. I I think
Yeah.
You could put some shrubbery or or some trees or something, some sort of a screening.
Until they make that turn. Yeah. Yeah.
Houses up here, that's what the. Uh, that's not a problem at all. We absolutely.
Yeah, just throw some shrubs in there.
Yep. Not a problem. It's all I misunderstood.
Screen off for, for the neighbors.
And, and Mr. Chairman, on the same point, but on the other exit down to, uh, Milford Street, I did take another look at that because I do recall these people on North Avenue.
Can you go down?
In, in your, yeah. But I did good, give some consideration to this as well. And the, the, the dwelling that is closest to the driveway is farther east. And there's open grass, if I remember correctly. So vehicles coming down page here would not be shining their lights directly onto the dwelling because the dwelling's farther to the east.
Yeah.
And if cars were up above and they were coming around the bank and approached that stop sign, stop bar that we see on the left.
Yeah.
And then made a right to come down the driveway. They're up high enough there that I believe if they project headlights toward the dwelling as they come around that corner, they're probably going to hit the roof or, or side, go over the roof. But it was up around that height, given the elevations. And then as they turn and come down, after they've made their turn, then they're going to be projecting the headlights downhill as well. So if anything, there's a slight possibility of a little bit of headlight shine as vehicles turning and starting to descend.
Not much.
If, if it even occurs, I, I couldn't come to any clear conclusion on that, but.
Uh, we have no issue adding that.
Oh man, say, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Because they were, they were concerned and, you know, that would make them happy.
Yep, absolutely. I actually thought it was the other area. That's why I make my apologies.
So no issue with the, uh, stormwater management?
None whatsoever.
Hydralogy was all good?
Yep.
Client of the stamp, stormwater handbook?
Yep, yep. Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd like to bring to the board's attention, uh, comment number six. It's got to do with the onsite sidewalk system.
Yeah, I think you referenced it before. Now they're going to put a, a temporary sidewalk.
Well, if we, can you go down a few slides? Probably like the seventh slide.
Yeah, one more, I think.
And then one more.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, so let's, yeah, I think red one is the temporary sidewalk or is?
No, so, so I'll try to explain this, um, plan. So it's tricky because it's right in the middle of a construction project and the, and ultimately we need mass DOT approval for whatever we do. So we thought it made sense to align a sidewalk, which is in red, that aligns with, this is the sidewalk we'd love to have, mass DOT incorporated into their, their project. Aligns with their widening, it would go to where their intersection would be. That would, that would make sense. In the event that the timing is such that there'll be a lag in time between when they're done with their, their roadway and when we're looking to open up, we showed an area where you could put an interim sidewalk, essentially stretching out to the existing road as you traditionally see. So we've sketched out where a sidewalk could go. So that's really what we tried to show here. So here's where we would like a permanent sidewalk to go and here's where a temporary sidewalk could, could go if there was a lag between the two projects. Ultimately, we'd need to apply for mass DOT and it's ultimately their decision what to grant or what not to grant.
Right.
Uh, but we wanted to at least present something to the board to say this is what we could talk to, to DOT about.
I think we would need, need to make a condition that at least before opening the building, that the temporary sidewalk is in.
That we apply to seek because at the end of the day, we can't control mass DOT, but we are more than happy to basically go through the process with DOT and making an application to basically do that prior to the opening of the building.
I mean, I, I think I'd be hard pressed to believe that they wouldn't allow if safety concerns, first of all.
Agree. The only issue is if they're saying, I'm going to be done in one month and I don't want to allow this because that's coming, like they, we can't force them.
I haven't known the state to work that quickly.
Before the state gets that down.
So if the condition is basically, we, we are more than willing to basically seek an application of mass DOT, um, and basically in good faith press.
All right, well, we'll make a condition that you will work with the planning board prior to opening the building on that issue.
I, okay, that's fine. That makes, that makes sense.
Just so we're in the loop before.
Oh, absolutely. We would be more than happy to basically provide you copies of what we submit.
Okay.
Things on those slides.
Fine.
So keep you in the loop.
And, and the concern with mine, uh, number six was not the layout. I'm, I'm happy with the layout. It was the timing. If I read it, if I understood correctly, the, in, in the written response was that they would seek a permit from mass DOT one year after occupancy. And I'd, I'd, I'd rather see the sidewalk, whether it's permanent, temporary, usable for the people that are going to be pedestrians trying to gain access here sooner rather than later. So, uh,
Yeah, that was kind of my point.
Where I'm going with that is I wouldn't want to see the condition be an application one year af- apply for it within one year after occupancy, but apply for it by the time of occupancy.
I think at time, yeah, I think, okay, yeah, I think we're in agreement with the proposal that the chair provided.
Jack, did you get all that?
I got it.
Okay. On that, it looks like everything else in order unless you guys had more to add. Uh, we can talk about the traffic. It sounds like the traffic came up palpable, palpitable.
Yeah, I think the only, uh, remaining issue we've already talked about is the sidewalk, uh, which we just talked about.
Uh, Bill, the one other issue is we got a, um, comment from the new fire chief and he would like a cistern on the property. And through email, I went back and forth with the applicant. They've agreed in principle. I would suggest a condition that, um, that they need fire department and planning board approval on any design and management of a cistern.
I think, I think what they were, Jack, if I read it correctly, right, they're just moving it to the, for the east side of the building, is that right?
There was one there originally?
No, I don't, no.
The, the comment from the fire chief is, as for One North Ave, uh, looking over the plans, we'd like to see the cistern along the entrance off North Ave as that would be our entrance and ideally on the north side to provide distance from the buildings.
Yeah.
So basically they're going to put it on the north, north, northwest side of the building, up the corner.
Yeah.
Probably in that wedge we were looking at earlier.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so.
That'll be in the conditions?
Yeah.
Yes.
So in the last meeting we had, Mr. Chairman, you had made, uh, local concerns about the loading and unloading in the front of the building and potential for traffic incidents with customers and whatnot. I just noticed you have the, where you have the, the trash bin and there's an empty space behind the building. Is there any reason why you didn't design the loading and unloading?
I think there's a, I think there's a serious grade there.
Yeah, there's grade chains. So if you're coming up there, climbing up a grade.
Yeah, I think that's why they made the spot in the lower parking. I don't think it shows that they have to go up.
Yeah, well, here's the elevation at least.
Yeah, you can see the stairs.
Yeah, there's stairs here. So that's, so, and then I can show you the loading.
Okay, when, that one doesn't show it.
Yeah, we've moved it on the actual site plan that was resubmitted. That was.
Exactly, yeah, that's, that's, we didn't colorize the, the new one.
I know, one of those. Okay. All right, make sure you put.
There it is. Yeah, yeah, I apologize.
Sorry.
They moved it up there, out of the way. Depending upon the proposed usage, we'll have to look at that when they, they come back, uh, the approval for the usage.
Yep.
All right, um, I will take, any other questions in the board? Unity, Jane? Actually, I think we have renderings. Don't we have renderings? It looks pretty nice. Yeah.
Kind of looks similar to the bank across the street.
Yeah.
Similar to Charles River.
We have stone veneer in the bottom by feet.
We have the renderings.
Yeah, it, uh, it's like.
I guess my only concern would be that flat awning cover kind of doesn't look colonial, but I think the rest of us, yeah, I think the rest of it. I don't know if there's something you can do in that corner for.
More modern than this one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which area? I know exactly. Okay, I got you. I got you.
Kind of looks.
How about, yeah, how about like a, a metal roof coming from the, from the bottom of the peak? Down all the way around that corner.
Yeah, we'll work it up.
That way there, and that, Jane, would you like that?
He's going to do, they're going to bring an awning piece down instead of that flat.
We just made it so that it was a, uh, that's to be on the most, you know, a, a roof, a, a roof, like a metal roof.
Coming down.
Like a modern farmhouse type of look. That be comfortable? Well, the tenet's not going to be there. It's not going to say tenet.
No, it, it's just be a fur.
They won't know.
It's a placeholder.
Yeah. Something simple.
But I'm sure whatever, whoever takes up that space is going to do some very nice signage, um, and it needs to be, it needs to be approved.
Building looks nice.
We provided, yeah, pursuant to your, your request, we provided the locations where the sign is and also, uh, freestanding sign as well. It's in the revised submission.
Okay, like I said, we'll, we'll address that when you bring the signage before us anyway, so.
Nice job.
Needs to be approved. I think that one looks, I think that one looks fine.
Going to the freestanding, we worked in. A little warm, so, there we go. Would we need to come back for approval on the freestanding or is that something that we can handle? Now, either way, it's fine with us. I just, we did, uh, submit this. Uh, you requested it at the last public hearing, so we had this prepared for you to show the freestanding sign.
The only thing I have to look at is, is that a lit sign? Exactly.
It's backlit, but we're in compliance.
It'll need a sign permit with the building department anyway and he'll make sure that.
It meets the, the sign by law. Yeah, it has to meet the sign by law.
Everything that we're showing meets the current sign by law.
Okay.
I think on the planning side, as long as it's consistent and it's not in the way or something like that, it's more important on, on our side.
It's, we have, we're beyond the, we have the appropriate buffer for the road and it's located in that little area.
Yeah, but what, what I don't want to see is lit signs on the building. Okay?
Looks like they have down lighting.
I mean, yeah.
Down lighting on the sign.
Yeah, down lighting on the sign.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're not.
Generally how he does it anyways, his properties, but I just want to be clear.
That right there, see how that light's on the front? Yeah, that looks sweet.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Bill, I have a question.
Eric?
Uh, at the last public hearing for this site, uh, I had heard some concerns from residents in the area about, um, potential impact to property values. And I'd asked the, the applicant about doing a fiscal impact assessment, uh, to speak to the, um, the proposed, um, or the, the projection of values on adjoining properties. Is that something the applicant's prepared to speak to today?
Yeah, we actually submitted that fiscal report.
Yeah, I thought I forwarded that to the board.
Oh, my apologies. I must have missed it.
Yeah.
So the fiscal report, basically, we have an opinion from a real estate broker, uh, that the, uh, project will not have any impact, uh, on house evaluation immediately surrounding proposed project. We also, through our fiscal, um, engineer, basically provided a full, uh, fiscal analysis on the net positive fiscal impact of about forty thousand, about forty five, uh, forty one thousand to the town on annual taxes that will be, uh, generated as well as potential about forty two thousand on one-time building permit fees. They also go into some other areas, construction costs, gets into the nitty gritty of it. But at the end of the day, they also, uh, looked at and provided, uh, references to certain research papers that have been produced on the, on this topic and most showing that no impact on valuations and sales with some even showing a positive impact after the realty, excuse me, the retail development was completed. There's also a large study that was conducted by, uh, Robinson College of Business at Georgia Tech University, which evaluated the impact of residential home sales within a half mile, three quarter mile and one mile radius of newly built retail developments. Their study found that the retail development had either no impact or had a positive impact on the property values over time. In fact, in some neighborhoods, residential values were lower than the median for the community and realized a higher percentage increases after the new retail development went into the community. So based on what we have, uh, from a real estate broker, that's local real estate broker, as well as our fiscal analysis, we basically have provided what we believe in their professional opinions is that this, this project would not have any impact on the surrounding. If this was a convenience store gas station, obviously it could be, but this is a, is a bank business as well as certain retail, so. Uh, we prepared that and did for that pursuant to the board's request as well.
Any other question, Eric?
Yep, thank you for the summary.
Any other questions? Nope.
Good.
All right.
Make a, but he's good. I'll make a motion too.
Wait, hold on. Jack's going to.
Yeah, I got, I got your list. Um, I've got that, any, uh, once a use is, is identified for the vacant building, it must come for approval from the planning board, that a cistern has to be approved by the fire chief as to location, size and, and installation. That the, it'll be a revised tree plan, uh, extending trees to the west side along the entrance to North Road, North Street.
That's, that's the north side.
North side. I get my sides mixed up on the computer. That's what it is. Um, I can't see the north arrow. Um, uh, that, once the applicant has identified which sidewalk configuration they're going to use on Milford Street, they will bring that to the planning board and that you will revise the, uh, the architecture to the awning. I'll, I'll wordsmith this or I'll have Dylan wordsmith it.
You're okay with all?
He's better than I am at this.
Yeah, with DOT, I think the, what your proposal was that at, uh, prior to seeking occupancy permit, we would submit an application to, to mass DOT, uh, requesting that it's at that time an interim. It's not at that time a permit, basically, and it'd be at that.
I would just say we are going to need it nasbilled at the end, right? Like, we're going to need to know what it looks like in the end, so. You can come for a minor modification. It doesn't have to be.
But walk that through. If you're, if you're ready to get your occupancy permit, it's a little too late to decide how you're going to build the sidewalk.
So the concern is that they, right, right? So we don't, we don't control.
This is a safety issue on a very busy road.
No, we understand that. It's just the timing. I think we're, we're all in agreement that we basically, we are going to go to mass DOT. It's just the timing of when we go.
Yeah, I just don't want others in the van to open and we got a bunch of people.
How about at a condition that we apply to mass DOT, uh, for approval of, what's best time period, I guess?
When, when do we usually submit, like, once we be placed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation in this matter. When they apply for a building permit, apply to mass DOT.
That's fine.
And at least get that ball rolling with mass DOT and, and it's.
So a condition that we apply to seek, that's fine.
Okay, applicant will apply to mass DOT, uh, can, uh, coinciding with the application for a building permit. Got it.
Perfect. Thanks, Jeff.
Welcome.
Nice assist.
Thanks, Jeff.
Welcome, Jack.
All right, any other questions? Alright, any other questions?
Do we have the cistern? Yeah, you said that.
Yep.
And uh, can we just get a new set of plans with the page four six?
Sorry.
Page four six. Page four, yeah, that's the one with the um, the loading, that's the zone isn't the one spot.
Yeah.
Oh.
So that, that's just my presentation, so that's, that's the old plan presentation, so the plans that have been submitted are.
Are correct, okay, that's fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so I think, I think uh
Jack, you good?
No more questions?
I'm good.
I make a motion to approve plans for one, in conditions for one north half.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Dave and I.
Limberzino, I.
Eric Hodge, aye.
And that puts them out of the rest.
We'll draft it up and get it ready for Bill's signature.
Special permit for two principal uses, special permit for uh drive-through, site plan, and then also our waiver request.
That'll be helpful.
Alright.
Waiver request was uh specific.
I think we had a waiver request.
I didn't, I don't remember one.
There were a couple. Well, at the end of the day, I originally had a waiver request for fiscal impact, which I ended up providing, waiver for loading space, which I ended up providing, uh photograph plan, which we provide, I mean, uh lighting plan, which we provided as well. Uh, community impact assessment, which I, in essence, kind of provided.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the waivers are bye-bye.
Yeah, babe, waivers, I didn't think we had.
See, you tried to get away with it, and they, we wouldn't let you.
Seeing all that stuff you did.
I know.
Have you still, he is right, Bill, you still need to vote on the stormwater permit and um, what else? I guess that's it, just the stormwater permit.
I, so I make a motion for to approve the stormwater permit.
Yep. One door.
Good on the site plan review, but we'll uh, do I have a second?
Second. We have a second.
Second, and all of it. Dave and I.
Limberzino, I.
Jay, aye.
Eric Hodge, aye.
Alright. Now we'll draft that councilor, I'll show you a draft prior, and we'll get Bill's signature on it.
Solid, right, thank you, Jack, very much. Thank you all.
To make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yeah, so, okay. All those in favor?
Dave and I.
Limberzino.
Thanks, guys.
Jay, aye.
Thank you.
Hey, you want this back?
Eric Hodge, aye.
Hold this over, uh, some guy from Alabama, it's started.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Good evening.
Okay. We eat dinner at midnight. Right?
That's breakfast, David.
Yeah, you're done, man.
I'm done.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry to keep you.
It's breakfast, you said?
Yeah, at the midnight, it's breakfast.
Not that late.
I know, I thought it was later.
Bye, John. Where you going?
Hey, John. Hey, how come, John, how come you're not in West Springfield?
Are you gonna stay up until last?
John, how come you're not in West Springfield?
Yesterday.
Oh. How was it?
Good, it's busy.
I know.
Oh, yesterday was Sunday, I thought it was Saturday.
Okay. Can you put this on the screen, Dylan? I know.
Okay, alright, I'm here.
Alright, we have eighty-one T for thirty-eight and forty, North Fridge Road.
Correct.
Do you use the sign?
No, that's separate, it's just, it's that one, the big one.
Alright, so.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, so Billy's proposing lot one, which has frontage and area. And then the back lot is not, is identified as not a buildable lot.
Correct.
So it's pretty straightforward in my eyes.
Wrong seat.
Yeah, I'm just increasing the frontage on my house.
Right. With that little piece.
I, I think it's eighty feet. It's gonna leave the other lot with a forty-foot frontage.
That's just the access to the back.
That's the access to the back.
Oh, looks good to me.
Just adding eighty feet of frontage.
Yep.
And squaring off the lot.
Alright. Eric, can you determine from that what's going on? Are you muted?
I lost the window, hold on one sec. There we go.
I have four minutes.
Yes, I signed them.
So Eric, there's a piece on the front that, that's a piece of land where the temporary storage enclosure is cited. That's being added to the lot part, AKA parcel one. Which will then form one lot, proposed lot one. It has frontage, it has lot size.
Yeah, because my garage was too close to the boundary line, and there was no variance for that. Long time ago.
So does that mean the, the back lot no longer has any frontage?
It has frontage on the bottom, but it doesn't need any on it, so it's not a buildable lot.
Okay. Makes sense.
That's a deed right of way. Now, do I have to send a note to the selectmen to take this out of the forest, out of the forestry?
Okay.
A square foot, whatever that square footage is, I can't see. I've got it written down at home.
Yes.
I just got an informal mail to him, a letter to him.
I see, so, yeah.
Yep.
Huh?
Or Jeremy or, or to Katie, so that they can send it to the selectmen.
Yeah. I know Jean said she was gonna, but she's not here. It's been put off so many times.
Yeah, make a motion to
Endorse.
Endorse.
There you go.
Thank you, Jack.
There you go.
Thirty-eight forty.
Second. All those in favor? Barry, aye.
Dave and I.
Limberzino, I.
Jay Kraus, aye.
Eric Hodge, aye.
Eric, can you permit to sign the form A at some point?
Yeah, do, I just go into uh the planning office sometime tomorrow or something? Can do.
Now, I've just gotta record this and watch that, right?
Yep.
Dylan, what's our next meeting?
That's a great question.
When's our next meeting, Dylan?
How long have I got to record this, Jack?
Um, third, uh, six months.
Oh, my god.
It's technically uh September thirtieth.
No, because we don't do three in a row, we just do.
Oh, that's right, so it's the first.
The seventh.
Seventh of October.
Of October.
We don't we don't have anything screaming in front of you at the moment.
John, you should have an attorney record that for you. I said you should have a, a attorney record that for you.
I believe I agree, we'll do it.
Yeah, because they're probably gonna need to revise speed.
We will, yeah, we have one, um, seven nip muck is coming.
Oh, okay.
I've already done that once.
We have another A and R to go.
We got one more eighty-one T.
Now, this doesn't have a okay, this is the Rossam Park Road, lot twelve eight, that's we uh we did at the last meeting. Guys, all set? Well, they need a bunch of those uh oh, those are on my lots?
No, one mile up. She's got a copy.
She got a copy, but?
Yeah.
She needs a alright, whatever, as long as she's all set.
Looks like it.
What, two?
Why not?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's next. Oh, we have a format. Oh, it's just a correction, so no, it's just a correction, yeah, so we don't need a whole process.
But Bill, explain it to them, it's a good reason, it
Yeah. Yeah, what do we do, what do we do?
Uh, so, it, I can explain, um it's Fred online, no, I think Fred wasn't sure if he could come, so um, the issue was that there was a uh measurement mark on the Upton side of it, and because they were putting information about the Upton side of the lot on there, they needed Upton signatures on the same sheet. So instead, he's removed the measurements of the lot line on the Upton side, just focused on Menden.
And the thing was, all
See, John.
All he was doing was referencing the marker on the Upton side of the
Yeah, the marker.
Downline, and and, good night, John. And the um in the registry included it. They had to come back, had to remove that marker, be up in, up in the side. And um
No, it had no bearing on what you guys did.
Doesn't change what we already.
Yeah, it was right here, there was just a measurement, so yeah, just.
You know, I gotta, I gotta hand it to the registry, they're, they're pretty on top of things.
Very specific.
Yeah.
Except for that's I was very surprised. Fred called me, I was like, what?
We need another form A?
No.
No, we don't need a form A in this. You need to say uh
Just a correction.
Well, I got Bill, Dave, and
You only need three signatures, technically.
It's the one that does everything. Fred just dropped that one off so you could see the difference.
Yeah, I gotta assign that.
Eric will come in tomorrow to sign this.
I hope you don't have COVID, Eric.
Oh, I had that back in July, but, you know. It's enough of a cold that I just didn't wanna be coughing all over everybody.
Thank you.
That's just it, you know.
I'm running away from you.
Yeah. I feel like you guys think I'm ducking you at this point.
Yeah.
No, that's alright. So what do you think, you good? Yeah, I think we just need a uh
Do we need to motion to endorse that one, or no?
Oh, yeah, we get endorsed.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, it, there's an argument, you don't have to, but why not?
Yeah, I think most people I've asked have said that you really don't even have to vote on it at all, but, oh, it's good to have it on the minutes. Case anybody have a question.
Yep.
I make a motion to endorse
lot twelve eight.
Lot twelve eight, simply spread.
Random.
Second, okay.
All those in favor?
Roll call.
Yes.
Dave and I.
Limberzino, I.
Jay Kraus, aye.
Eric Hodge, aye. Second.
Eric second.
Dave and I.
Eric Hodge, aye.
Have a good night, aye.
Hey, guys, Dylan, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Alisa.
Oh, my pleasure.
Yeah, great, excellent.